Good afternoon, everyone. Today is July 9, 2024. This is a city council, City of Prescott study session. And it's always nice to have our first meeting post rodeo week and also post celebration of our Independence Day celebrations on July 4. And in honor of that, I'm wearing my Declaration of Independence tie today. So we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Fritworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
All are present.
All right. Today, we have one item on our study session agenda. It's a presentation and discussion regarding utility and nonutility developmental impact fees. And it appears that our Finance Director, Mark Woodfield, will be starting off the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director. I am unfortunately not the expert. Today, we have these experts from Raftellus, Todd Cristiano and Andrew Rehm with Raftellus, who will be doing the bulk of the presentation. I wanted just to go over some history. I'm looking at my slide, and for some reason, it looks black and white when it was nice and green and everything in the thing. Hopefully, you can see that. I tried to do just a one-page graphic to talk about some of the history of impact fees in the City of Prescott. So we'll just talk through it real quick. We've had impact fees for the last 44 years. There's been a lot of talk about our history on collecting impact fees, but we have been collecting impact fees for the last 44 years. As you can see, they've been on various items over those times, mainly water and sewer, wastewater, which is common. If you look at our history, it would be similar to the history of every other city in Arizona. In the 90s, we initiated a bunch of other fees, including parks, including recreation, library, police, fire, streets, and public buildings, which went on through the 90s. And then in 2004, when we purchased the Big Chino Water Ranch, we had a water resource fee that was initiated to help pay a portion of the costs associated with that. In 2008, some people may remember, there was a little interruption to the housing markets. And the state legislature's response to that was to issue House Bill 2008, which put a moratorium on any impact fees that municipalities charged. And we actually had just gone through a study to increase our water, wastewater, and water resource fee, and we actually had to roll that back. The moratorium was in place for a couple of years until House Bill 1525. I think I got that one right in 2011.
That was Senate Bill.
Senate Bill. Thank you. I knew it'd be wrong somewhere. Senate Bill 1525, which adopted the current state law that's still in place, which outright eliminated certain fees we could charge, including public buildings and recreation. In addition to eliminating those specific items, it also put severe limitations on, like libraries, the size of libraries you could do. It also had a 10-year use requirement in the statute, and it also required us to do a new study in compliance with the law by August of 2014. I'm pretty sure that was right. That's when we had ours done. When we did that study, we looked at all of our areas. Obviously, two were eliminated, so we looked at the others. And there was concern by council, concern by legal counsel at the time, based on the state law, which is relatively new, untested, if you will, that we were not going to be able to identify the non-growth component associated with the needs for police, fire, streets, and all those other areas within the 10-year period, and therefore be subject to the refund provision. So at that time, it was decided to not go forward with those fees, which is what happened. We took forward the water, the wastewater and water resource fee. Excuse me. Forward, we chose not to move forward with the other fees. And then five years later, we're required to study this every five years. There was a feeling on council that we needed to reconsider the public safety, the police, the fire, and also the streets fee. We looked at the parks fee at that time, and again, the issue that we really don't have an identified funding source for the other side of that. You know, if 20% of a park system that you're looking at building is growth, you still got to come up with 80% of the other revenue. So that fee was not put in place. And libraries is so restrictive, it really doesn't meet our community needs. They shrunk the size of the library you're able to do down, so you couldn't do in North Prescott. It's limited to more neighborhood libraries, very small libraries, which aren't operationally efficient to run. So those were eliminated. But in 2018, 2019, we did reestablish the police and fire fees. And as you can see, there's a lot of As up there on the thing. We constantly study these even before it was statutorily required to do it every five years. There's been a lot of iterations over this time period. And again, impact fees are a one-time fee, charged at the time of building permit, not the time of subdivision is platted, but when somebody pulls an actual building permit for a lot. And it is intended to recover that unit's cost of infrastructure to maintain the existing service level. So it's not intended to bring response times down from 11 to 8. You can't do that. The statute only allows you to recover the current service level requirement. If you under-collected impact fees in the past, for whatever reason, if you can't waive impact fees, you can't under-collect, you can't charge any deficit in these impact fee funds to new development. Only thing you can charge new development is related to the cost of that new unit in the system. So, you know, whether you didn't collect fees or did collect fees in the past, it doesn't matter. It really wouldn't change our current impact fees that are allowed to be brought forward. I think I covered everything I wanted. Just wanted to cover the history and some of those basics on impact fees. They're paid at time of permit, so, I mean, you can consider them, they're not really paid by a developer that does a subdivision. They're paid by a builder that pulls a permit or an owner that pulls a permit, but it's intended to cover the cost of those fees. And again, it's new building, whether it's a new resident or not, which is another question we've had come up in the past. If I decide to go put a new house in, I still got to pay an impact fee, even though I've lived here most of my life, because it's a new house and I'm not taking my old one.
Councilman Gambogi.
So, Mark, over the years, over 40 years?
Forty-four.
Over 44 years, we've had impact fees, and they've been different impact fees, based on that.
Yeah, they've been, they're reviewed regularly and adjusted for increases in construction. You notice, as we get through today, our fees are going up significantly. That's related mainly to an increase in the cost of construction.
Okay. And it's hard to ask this question, because there's not apples to apples, but what would an impact fee be 44 years ago and what would it be today, based on $400,000 house?
I think you could buy half the town 44 years ago for $400,000. But I couldn't tell you the impact fees for water and wastewater back then were done on a unit buy-in fee. So a toilet is three units or whatever. So it's really not apples to apples, and we only had the wastewater and the water system fees at those times. It's not something we couldn't calculate. I'm not sure how useful it would be to anybody, because, of course, there's been a little inflation over the last half a century. With that, we will bring up the experts. We'll bring Todd up. We'll talk about the nonutility impact fees, which are police, fire, and streets first.
Yep, it's right there. Big button forward, little button back. And this is a pointer that I can't ever get to work.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Todd Cristiano with Raftellus. As Mark had mentioned, my presentation today summarizes the results from our study of the nonutility impact fees. Oh, okay, great. And so I'll be walking through those. As you may recall, we presented the same information to you back in May. And spoiler alert, the changes or the fees we're showing today have not changed since May. But we'll go through the process and show you how we developed these fees and how we arrived at the fees that we've shown here. There are obviously some legislative requirements that we need to follow. Mark mentioned some of those. I'll talk about the methodologies we used and industry standard methodologies, and then we'll dive into each of the impact fee areas, which is streets, fire, and police. There is a legislative process. We have to develop a land use assumptions, LUA, and an infrastructure improvements plan. It's basically showing a capital plan over the next 10 years, what do you plan to build to serve growth? What are the demand units? What kind of population growth are we going to have? We have the service units, whether it's square footage or jobs for nonresidential or population growth, that sort of thing. We have, I can't read that. We have to look at the level of service. What are the services we provide? At what level of quality of service are we providing today? And that's what we have to maintain in the proposed impact fee levels, meaning we can't charge an impact fee to increase or improve a level of service by, say, reducing the calls for service for fire services from 12 minutes to eight minutes. We have to maintain the current, whatever the current level of services, that's what the impact fee needs to be based off of. And so that's the standard of quality, essentially. And this is what we use as a benchmark to help calculate the fees.
So, excuse me.
Yes.
I have a question. If we can only maintain our current service levels, if we want to improve those service levels, we can't use impact fees to do it.
That is correct.
We would have to find a different funding source to be able to catch up.
Exactly. Correct. Yeah. And that's one of the challenges of impact fees with measuring levels of service. If you have a very poor level of service, your impact fee is going to be based on that lower level of service, and you'll have to find other means to do that. There's obviously the legislative process and timeline. I won't go through the dates here, but we're moving through that here. We have some future milestones coming up in the next couple of weeks, next month or so, and I'll show what those are. Some key highlights of the Arizona revised statute, and you may be familiar with these, and I'm going to be reading from my notes here, because I cannot see the screen there. Essentially, the fees need to be in proportion to what the customer's receiving. So the facilities they're receiving, the cost needs to be proportionate to that. It's a one-time fee, meaning it's not only charged once at the point of the building permit, and it should not exceed the proportional share of the cost of the facilities you're providing. And it needs to be applied to everyone equally, based on their relative size of facilities or home size and whatnot. And they cannot be used, impact fees cannot be used for operation and maintenance expenses or curing a deficiency in the system for fire, police, or streets as well. And there's some other more detailed requirements of statutes, but those are some of the higher level key points that we focus on for this. Here is our timeline that we had been working through. We are currently at the July 9. We have about three more milestones to get us through January 1, 2025, implementation or fees that are in effect. And today, we're just presenting that last presentation on our proposed fees. So I'll move to the methodologies that we use, and these are industry standard methodologies. These are not steps or calculations that Raftellus came up with. These are industry standard. They've been tested and used with municipalities across the U.S., including Arizona. And real quickly, there's three of them. There's what's called a cost recovery, which is a historical look, meaning that there are some existing capacity in the facilities you have, and meaning that new customers can come in and pay their impact fee and help buy into this existing system that has capacity to serve them. It's called a historical or buy-in method. There's incremental expansion, meaning there's really not any growth related, but we're charging an impact fee for that next increment amount of growth, based on current service levels. All right? So each new person that comes in, they're paying an impact fee based on the current service levels and the current valuation of the facilities. And by facilities, I mean either streets or buildings for fire or trucks and that sort of thing. Then there's plan-based, which is future-related. And this looks 10 years into the future. What are those growth-related projects that we'll need to build to serve growth that we can charge through an impact fee? Again, there might be a lot of projects that you have in the next 10-year window that are, a portion of it is growth-related, a portion of it is non-growth-related. We have to sift through that and determine what portion of those projects that we're going to build to serve growth are just growth-related and not repair and replacement or improvement-related. Those costs are set aside for some other funding source. Moving on to land use assumptions, overall, these are the things we need to know when we develop our fees. We're looking at a 10-year window going forward. We know our population has increased. We're projecting the population to increase over the next 10 years by about 7,617 people. And we base this off the U.S. Census data and the growth rate from the CYMPO transportation master plan that came out recently. Housing units, again, like population, housing units are projected to increase by about 3,800. The number of jobs or new commercial development is going to increase by about 2,900 or almost 3,000. And nonresidential square footage associated with those new jobs, new buildings will be built, new square footage, and that's projected to go up about a million square feet. And again, this information is from published data by the Census Bureau, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and what's called On the Map, which is another website within the Census Bureau. Again, common information that's used in developing impact fees. All right, so let's talk about streets. Couple of streets assumptions is that we are including the growth share for the 10-year period. So again, those projects that are just growth-related, those costs. Currently, to help determine our level of service, we have 101.4 lane miles of streets within the city limits. And we're only talking within the city service area. We're not talking about developing impact fees for outside the area for regional-type highways and that sort of thing.
Those are just arterial miles.
Yes, major arterials, right. We have 14 intersections that can be improved. The current level of service is 1.33 lane miles per 10,000 vehicle miles traveled, VMT. What's important here is that's the level of service we're using to calculate the fees. And it's basically saying that here is the number of lane miles per the number of vehicle miles that will travel over these lanes in a specified time period. And it's just that unit of measure. Our service area is only the city portion of growth-related arterials, excludes arterials associated with regional growth. So any sort of highway outside the city service area is excluded. And we went through a deliberate process with our evaluation of the street's infrastructure improvement plan to make sure that we are capturing thus those street growth-related projects that would benefit within the city.
Councilman Moore had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Is there any way to forecast annexations like that might change streets that become or come into the city boundaries under this particular issue that you just discussed?
There could be a way if you had a plan, if you had a plan of what the demand might be. But of course, with annexation, there's a lot of other things that come into play. And honestly, I don't know how the statute might want to consider that, because it's still, it's up in the air until, you know, the ink is dry on the contracts and all of that. So I would say that it wouldn't be prudent to include that until there's a level of certainty regarding that annexation, because it will become part of the city service area at some point. So some components of the streets fee, we have to look at the residential population growth, just in housing units and the number of people that are being added. We have to look at the growth in jobs and square footage of building space that's going to be added, because that's driving the growth, that's driving the demand for new expanded streets, new growth in streets. We have to look at the number of trips that'll be taken by residential and all sorts of people coming within the city, the number of trips that are taken at various locations, whether it's to your house or to the 7-Eleven or to the grocery store. We have to look at the number of trips that are occurring, because that's what's driving demand. That's what's causing the wear and tear on the infrastructure, is the demand, all the cars that come in and out of the city. And we have to look at the total number of vehicle miles traveled within the city. So again, that's one car and the number of miles traveled over a period of time, whether it's a day or a year. We have to look at all of that demand over the course of the study period to help us determine what's the cost of that and what's going to be the cost for the impact fees for the various land uses, residential and nonresidential. We need our infrastructure improvement plan, the number of new lanes that we're adding, new intersections that we're expanding or improving. We need to know what the capacity is in the lanes. We know the demand, the number of vehicle miles traveled, the number of trips we're taking, but we need to know what's the capacity the future lanes will be able to handle. If we have a vehicle miles traveled or demand that's greater than the capacity we're building, we have to go back and sharpen our pencil and reevaluate our infrastructure improvement plan. So we need to make sure we have capacity, we're building the right amount of capacity for that new demand over the 10-years period. And most importantly, here's a complex calculation. Basically, what I want to show here is that there's a relationship between the number of trips taken, the average trip length from a commuter, and the average trip length of commuter, and adjustments to those trip lengths, whether you're making pass-by trips or, you know, to your final destination, you're making intermediate trip stops and things, and how that affects the whole demand model and things. But again, it's an industry standard process to use these assumptions in developing the impact fee for streets. Stated a different way here, again, just trying to show there's a lot of assumption that go into this. And we talked about some of these, the population growth, the jobs, and our infrastructure improvement plan. We have travel demand statistics. I mentioned those. We have the number of trips taken. We have the average trip length it takes to get to certain types of enterprises, be it commercial or residential. What's the trip length taken? How many trips are taken? And the number of lane miles we're going to be adding and all that sort of thing. And then what the overall demand is, how many miles traveled over this time period? Are we assuming that we need to recover the cost to serve that new demand? And so we have a fee calculation that considers all of those items here. So I just wanted to show the process that we went through, and it's, again, it's based on a number of assumptions. And to the extent that we can use Prescott-specific assumptions, we can. There are a lot of assumptions that we use that are predicated by the Institute of Transportation Engineers that are more general assumptions, but again, that's a recognized source for developing these impact fees. So here's our infrastructure improvement plan. We have a number of projects here. I won't go through each of them individually here, but you can see that in column four, the growth portion talks about, shows the percentage of the project costs that are growth-related. And that's where we're able to kind of strip off the project costs that should not be in the impact fee. And that's the deliberative process we went through with staff to figure out what portions of those projects were growth-related.
Councilmember Rusing has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question on this chart. The very last entry is Fippen Trail construction projects, and it's pretty expensive. It's over $8 million. Do you have any details as to what that is?
I'd have to defer to Mark and Gwen. Gwen, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Gwen Roach, Public Works Director. So the Fippen Trail project, sorry, the Fippen Trail project is a low-water crossing that extends from the Fippen Roundabout across Granite Creek and over into the Granite Dells area. It was a requirement, I believe, under a development agreement.
Repeat yourself.
Can you hear me now? A little bit louder? Okay. So the Fippen Trail crossing is actually a low-water crossing that will extend from the Fippen Trail Roundabout across Granite Creek to the east and connect over into the Granite Dells area.
And to kind of expound on that, what Gwen said, we have obligation to do that under a development agreement with AED. So under that development agreement, they construct it with consulting with Public Works, and we reimburse for that amount.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
So Gwen, before you go sit back down, I've got to ask you a question. If I'm looking at those numbers right there, let's just take that Fippen Trail project, estimated at $8 million. Then you're saying 42% of that $8 million is attributed, or is it 100%?
No, ma'am. You're a line-off. 100% is attributed to growth for the trail.
Okay, but then back on the bottom, the bottom line, if we're looking at the total cost of over $41 million, 42% of that $41 million is attributed to growth?
That is correct.
Okay. But because of the Fippen Trail project is 100%, that'll be covered by the impact fees?
I can't stand here. I can't stand here and tell you that it'll be entirely covered by impact fees, but the impact, the estimated cost of it is being attributed to growth and not to current users.
But can we theoretically say that that money is charged to the development that requested this in the DA, or how does that work? Or does just all the impact fees go into a pot and we just pay for things out of it?
So the impact fees, and Mark can speak to this more, but impact fees are tracked in separate accounts for each impact fee. So the streets impact fee is tracked separately from the police and the fire, they're all separate.
Right.
And funds that are available within that account can be used against the cost of a project that has an impact fee associated with it, to the extent that those funds are available at the time that we construct it. If we finance the project, we can continue to collect the impact fee for the term of the financing as well. So there's a lot of different factors that come into play. Having it on the list and collecting an impact fee for it is the best way to recover as much of the cost as we possibly can through impact fees. And those impact fees are not specific to a particular development. Every new home in the city that builds, that builds a new home and pulls a building permit will pay their proportionate share of this impact fee for street projects.
But if you go up to the line, four points intersection improvements, it says 20% of that would be covered by the impact fee, I'm assuming. And the rest of the money comes out of the general fund? Or does that, where does the rest, or out of the streets?
It comes from the street fund, Mayor Protem. All street projects come from the street fund unless we specifically tell you that we're requesting other funding, but they come from the street fund. And four points is an established intersection. We already have 20-plus thousand cars a day going through that intersection. So we are, we are telling you that we believe another 20% more traffic will come through the intersection, which is why improvements to the intersection will be needed to handle that additional traffic that's coming as the city continues to grow. Because of the services that are in that area, traffic, more traffic will continue to come to that area of town.
So Gwen, I'm looking at this existing and proposed street fees. And I'm, would it be fair to say, if in the past, up until today, and hopefully we'll pass this, if we did not adjust our impact fees to cover what these costs are, the impact fees that we collected would be there, but whatever wasn't there, because maybe, maybe we weren't charging enough, would have been basically covered by the taxpayers? Is that fair to say?
Well, it comes out, it would come from anyone that purchases things in the city of Prescott because it will come from the one cent street fund, right? So that's not just people who live here, that's people who shop here.
Sure, and I get that.
For us, people outside the area, right? So, but it is fair to say that if we did not collect this impact fee, the monies that we would need to complete these projects, which are obligated, most of them by DAs, things like that, would reduce the amount of money in the street fund so that we can't do things like maintain the roads we already have.
Yeah.
So it is, it's a tool, it's one tool in the toolbox for us to build new infrastructure, maintain the existing infra, you know, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to take care of our street infrastructure. And this is one, one tool, and it is attributed to growth, or percentage of it.
In this particular one, I've gotten calls from probably four different subcontractors about this one, which comes close to an 80% increase from what it is, the proposed fee right now, proposed $3,184 on an 1,800-square-foot house. The current fee is $672. The change is $2,512 additional dollars to the proposed street fund. This is the one, well, they complained about all of them, but this one in particular. But as I have pointed out, had we been adjusting these all along, going back to the chart that Mark, it wouldn't be 80%. It would probably, and I just did a rough estimate, it probably would have been a 20, roughly 20 to 25% increase, what we're looking at today, rather than an 80. But because it was not adjusted over the last several years, now all of a sudden, based on a professional report, we're looking at an 80% increase, which is the heartburn out there. I have no problem with it. I think we should have been adjusting it all along, it wouldn't have been so hard to take now. But nonetheless, we are where we are, inflation is what it is, construction materials are what they are. This 80% increase is right. We have to do this in order to cover what we're doing. And if we don't collect the impact fees, then the taxpayer and, you know, our visitors end up paying for it out of the, you know, feeding the streets fund. So we've got to do it, and I just, to the people that have reached out to us to complain about this, I wanted that explanation so that they would understand why. We didn't just pick this number out of the sky. This is based on studies. We've hired a consultant, a professional who does this every day for a living. And it's 80% now, it should have probably been escalated over the last, you know, at least since 2014. I just wanted to point that out, thank you.
You know, I'll read a comment from a city council meeting in 2006 from a resident who stated, "If you do not increase impact fees to the point where they should be, you have two choices. Either your service levels drop down or all of the existing citizens have to make up for it and pay for the services for new growth." Gee, that was only, what, 18 years ago? So you're right, if we had incrementally increased these appropriately, we wouldn't be dealing with these huge increases now. But nevertheless, they're needed.
Thank you, okay, continuing on. Next slide, we just talked about the proposed fees. And as you can probably guess, inflation is just one factor in the increase in fees, but also the number of projects that are needing to be built too, as compared to the previous study. It's not, it's the infrastructure improvements plan, it's not an apples-to-apples. We didn't have the same projects in 19 that we do today, so that's a component of it as well. But really, inflation, the city's not alone, whether it's water, wastewater, streets, or whatnot, double-digit inflation on these things, concrete and things is really expensive now. And it's just a sign of, you know, the, what's happened over the past few years, but we're seeing it everywhere. It's, it's been difficult for some utilities, cities to grapple with, so. Okay, let's look into fire here. We have some assumptions for fire as well. We are looking at the portion of facilities that will be added over the next 10-year period. And the way that we look at the service demand or the, how we help split the cost between residential and non-residential, what's called functional population. I'll talk about what that is in just a moment. And we have a level of service we've defined as, there's a concurrent inventory of 41 vehicles, and the average replacement cost is $517,000. That's obviously an increase from the previous study, I think of around $400,000. So there's been quite a jump there. And on buildings, the current inventory is about 38,000, 39,000 square feet of buildings. And the average cost per square foot's about $700 per square foot. Now, in the 2019 study, that was around 320. So been a lot of changes, not just inflation, but technological changes and regulatory changes and all that sort of thing factor into that. So those are two things that have increased the cost. And because we're looking at the incremental method, those are the two primary drivers for the increase in the fees, unlike streets where we had.
Councilwoman Furworth, she had a question.
Yeah, in the, the level of service for the next one, buildings, was that also the 700 per square foot? Is that to build new? Or is that the value of our current buildings?
It's to build new, based on our estimated current replacement value of buildings, $700 per square foot. So building on that, we have a couple other assumptions here. We did have a methodology change when we developed our fees. We had previously used what's called calls for service, and that helps distribute the calls between residential and non-residential. But as you might imagine, on an annual basis, year-to-year basis, the number of calls that come in for residential versus non-residential can vary quite a bit. So if we were to continue to use the calls for service, we might have a group of fees for residential, non-residential. But the next time we do this study, it could flip because the calls for service could flip. Plus, sometimes the defined calls for service may not be clearly defined to determine whether, is this a residential call for service? Or is this a non-residential call for service? It might be in that kind of gray area. So instead of using that, we use what's called a functional population, which helps us determine how to split costs between residential and non-residential. Functional population is essentially looking at the population in the city at the time which is driving a demand for a particular fire or police-related service. And that remains fairly consistent year over year. And that information comes from the Census Bureau called On the Map. And they look at people who live in the city, that travel within the city, work within the city, live within the city but travel outside. And so it factors all that sort of service demand into the calculation so we can help determine the proportional cost assigned to residential versus the non-residential land uses. Another change we did for this 2024 study.
Councilman Moore had a question.
I just wanted to back up to what you were just explaining to us. That, that allocation, does it take into account the demographics of the community? I guess that's a concern because like we have a lot of care centers that require a lot of calls for the fire department that maybe another community wouldn't have if they didn't look at the age and the demographics of the community.
Not necessarily the demographics, as it is so much the land use of that facility, which would probably be institutional-type land use and has its own set of characteristics that draw, that help determine what the fee is going to be for that. So not specific characteristics like you're, like you're referring to.
I think just because of the aging population that we have as a community, as at a retirement community, we were just discussing that last week when we had a presentation on economic development, and we're looking at some of the statistics of our community and how it's so heavily weighted as a retirement community that there might be more calls of service for a non, pardon me, for residential just because of the high number of retirees in our area.
It, it could be, but again, there's, there's still that bit of volatility. And unfortunately, the calls for service that we get don't really distinguish, help us distinguish whether it's that type of facility or not. So that's why we chose the functional population, but something that continued to be looked at and evaluated. I mean, we did the comparison for both, so. And methodology too, and this is in the details here in the weeds, we determined how to.
Councilwoman Furworth had a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, before you move on, I just got to wrap my head around the term functional population. Because what Councilman Moore just said really resonated with me, and you kind of dismissed it. So now I really want to understand what functional population means.
If you give me two slides, I've got a slide that will help explain it. It's, it's a complex concept, so appreciate the question. So what we get with these changes we've got here is that we have a more consistent fee between each update, that's the bottom line. And it better reflects the proportionate cost of serving the land, the various land uses between residential and the various non-residential groups that we have, the office and retail categories that have for the impact fees. So real quick, I'm almost to the functional population part. The components of the fire fee is the inventory of existing and building square footage, existing vehicles, like I had mentioned. We have the residential functional population, the non-residential functional population. We have the average unit cost of the buildings that we're going to use, and we have the inventory of existing facilities. And this helps us determine this incremental method of calculating the impact fees for the fire. Okay. Sorry, a little off, I'm having to read this while I look at the screen too. It's kind of throwing me off here a little bit. All right, so functional population, this is again from the On the Map. It's not something that we invented or we went out and asked people whether they live and work in the city. But the Census Bureau does do an analysis every few years and updates this, what's called On the Map. And what it tells us, it's, it's, like I said, it's a kind of a more stable methodology of determining the demands for services between the residential and non-resident population. And it looks at the population, the daytime population that is within the city. And we have three different types we're defining here. We have residents or people living outside the city that come into the city and place a demand on the system. We have people that are employed and living within the city, and those, those demands they place on the system and the facilities they use. And those, those facilities they use incur a demand, and that's how we allocate cost. And then we have living in the service area, city of Prescott, but working outside the service area. So we have all these demands that are going on within the city, whether they're traveling inside the city. And that population creates a demand for services. And that population is visiting various facility, various land uses within the city, be it a commercial enterprise, a retail enterprise, they're creating a demand within the city for, you know, whether it's a restaurant, or whether it's an office building, or a retirement community or whatnot. And so we're equating the fact that we have this activity, this demand that's going in and out that is determining the, the demand requirement for different types of development. And that demand is, is what we use to determine the cost to provide service or the impact fee for various demands. Now, on non-residential, we just have two categories, three categories of, of land uses in which we define the impact fees for.
Councilwoman Furworth, you want to ask your follow-up question now?
Yes, thank you. So if you add the two more builds that I think are missing from the screen for the.
Oh, I apologize again, yes.
I added all those up, and it comes up to about 33,000 people. So what about the living in the selected area but unemployed population who still wants services?
They are included within the, see here, those should be living within the city. Those actually should be included in the, in the 6,000, I believe. I'm not sure it calls out, if it's not there, it doesn't, it doesn't come.
Our population is more closer to like 46, 47,000. So I think there's like 13,000 of the retired people living in their own homes or in other places that are, are missing. That's why I couldn't wrap my mind around functional population when I was doing this because I'm like, that's just a portion of the working population.
Right, right. I would have to go back and, and, and look at that, get that answer for you, I don't know off the top of my head, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
These are some real wake-up calls, so thank you for analysis. Make sure I understand. So 16,590 people are employed in the city, but they're driving in from somewhere else, Chino, Rusty Valley. And employed in the city is only 6,256. Now, this last category, living in the selection area but employed outside, does that mean living in the city but employed outside the city?
They drive elsewhere.
So they live here, but they work in Chino Valley. These don't add up to the population of the city, and they shouldn't, right? Because the people that are employed in the city that, but don't, but live outside the city are not part of the Prescott population.
Possibly, that's a good question. And again, I'll have to go back and look at that, but these are the three categories they have. I'll have to go back and check when this was last updated, which I think was two years ago or something. So I'll have to go back and, and I'll go back and look and double-check those, those values, but.
And I, and I think to Lois's point, we ought to have the people who live here that are retired and watch ESPN or.
Yeah, so it may not be the absolute numbers here, it's more of the ratio of those numbers between them. That is probably the more important thing to consider here too. But I will verify that for Council.
Are you adjusting these assumptions to take into effect the ongoing remote working status now that even people may be employed at a business that's outside the city, but they do their work locally at home? And it's more likely that if they have a problem, they're going to call the local fire department or police department, whereas if they had the similar problem where they were on-site somewhere else, they would be responding to needs there in those localities.
That would probably be employed and living in the city because they're still requiring specific demands, require, they're still placing demands on the system. And that cost would be shifted to more of the residential and then away from the commercial. Whether this data set capsulates really what's happened pre-COVID, I couldn't tell you whether, how they did the sampling and whether they've, there's a COVID adjustment. There was not anything that indicates that from the, the data we had. But I imagine in the future, that might shift things, that there's more home workers, that the demand, the functional population demand would shift costs more towards residential because you'd have more, maybe more calls as a result of not being at a commercial enterprise.
Mayor Protem had a question.
I do, just, that discussion we just had sort of begs a question. If the On the Map program is used for your analysis, obviously, is there a contribution given in terms of use? usage for the missing 13,000, probably retired that stay home a lot, but they do still go to Costco and go to the doctors? I mean, is there an allowable amount that is attributed to that sector?
Well, there's a couple of things going on here. This is just telling us the overall cost differential, how much total cost needs to be applied to residential and non-residential. What, the demand to specific types of land uses, that's kind of another step in determining, well, now that we've apportioned cost of facilities for impact fees to residential in total, a million dollars over to residential land use, and a million dollars to non-residential, we have to divvy that up in non-residential between the three categories of land uses you have, and that's where the specific demands, travel demands, come in for each land use, and that's where that would be captured. So this is really using on a higher level, like, look, we have, we have $10 million worth of growth-related costs, and we need to help allocate that cost based on this functional population, which is, which basically tells us what's the type of demand or level of service between non-residential and residential. It is then, once we use that and get to other steps of apportioning the cost between those two types of residential, non-residential, then within the subcategories of non-residential, like office buildings, retail and whatnot, the demands, the trips, the number of demands to that facility, that's where those costs get attributed to, so-
So maybe they're saying functional population as a literal statement, they're actually functioning. Some retired people are choosing not to be functional, so, just curious, thank you.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I think we're getting there.
It's complex, yes.
So this really doesn't represent the population of Prescott, it just represents the number of people that are driving vehicles, be they outside here, here to outside, or driving around in the city. So this goes back to your second paragraph about allocating vehicles between residential, non-residential. This, this is the people that are going to do an office somewhere, a plant, a factory, they're going to business, so it's non-residential.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct, correct. Again, this is, this is a complex topic, and marrying all these concepts to get to the fee is challenging, but the whole concept here of functional population is helping us determine the level of service, the number of vehicles per thousand population, whatnot, and splitting, helping us split that, the cost based on that, that demand type, and then once we get to the specific types of land uses within non-residential, why is retail higher than industrial? Well, it's because of the types of demand, the types of, number of trips that are coming in, and you may have seen on the road the little black bar that goes across the road, and they're measuring the number of trips that are going in and out to certain places, and that's basically what it is, and so institutional has a certain amount, retail probably has a lot more than institutional and that sort of thing. So looking at the calculation here, and this, this kind of provides how we get to the functional, how we do the functional population bit of it, and again, not go through all the gory details here, but the functional population here gets us to the, our square footage share for residential, what's the square feet of facilities required per population, and here, this is an example of looking at buildings, buildings for fire, right? What's this, how many square feet per person is required to provide a level of service they're currently getting? How many square feet of fire facilities or fire buildings are required per job or per square foot of facility? And that helps us determine the level of service, which in turn drives cost to those two different categories. That gives us our level of service, and then we can determine, we need to know our growth for both residential and non-residential, and then we can allocate the cost to both of them, and we can get to our residential building, square footage for growth, determining how many more square feet do we need over the next 10 years for residential, based on the level of service, and how many square feet of buildings are growth-related for non-residential. And then we come up with the IP, IIP growth-related cost, the growth per square foot times our current unit cost, and for the buildings, it was $700 per square foot. So it's all about proportionality, the functional population helps start the process of getting things apportioned based on level of service requirements, based on current level of service requirements, and then we can start allocating cost to those two areas, and helping to develop the impact fee based on a 10-year growth increases in square footage for non-residential and population for residential. So here's our, over the next 10 years, here's what we'll be able to fund, and again, this is the incremental component of it, basically, we'll be able to, for a, buildings, we'll be able to fund through impact fees an additional 5,800 square feet of facilities, and we'll be able to fund six vehicles over the next 10 years. And based on the unit cost I have there, $700 per square foot and $517,000 per facility, gives us our total growth-related cost that we're going to recover from impact fees over the next 10 years. So we look at, what's the current level of service, how many square footage, what's a square foot per person, and what's the square foot per job, I guess, for level of service, what's our current level of square footage? We have our growth, and we then can use that to determine, well, how much, based on the level of service, how much can we fund through impact fees, and what does that impact fee need to be to get to an additional 1,500 square feet of buildings and eight, six additional And again, this is based on the current level of service. Pause there for a second, let's take a look at the fees here. And so there is a jump here, and like I mentioned, the jump here really is the change in the dollars per square foot for buildings, from 320 to $700 per square foot, and the increase in the dollars per vehicle from about 400,000 to 517,000. Those are the primary drivers. The level of service is fairly similar to the 2019, there hasn't been many changes, but any changes there, they're causing a change, and the fee are really dwarfed by that increased unit cost, that's the key component here. Switching from the cost of service of functional population does make a difference, but again, it's those, those unit costs and for the building square footage and for the vehicles that are really driving the changes in the fees here. But going forward, in the next round of these updates, we would expect, if we stick with the functional population, we would expect that the proportionality here would remain the same, and that even theory, you would just see kind of an inflationary increase, you wouldn't see a huge shift between, you know, huge increase in residential and decrease in non-residential, they should track more closely aligned with what we have here for the next study. Police is very similar, will we have a question?
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, could you go back to the last slide?
Sure.
So I, if I even go back two slides, thinking about the dollar amount that we collected that we're carrying over the 1.000, almost $5 million impact fee fund balance from the last time the rates were adjusted, plus the new, I'm sorry, minus what we need, you know, that's about 35, 40% of a new fire station over the next 10 years, and our plan right now says we're going to build two new ones. So you can see how choices in the past of our impact fees have got us behind, and now we're in the catch-up mode. But if I go to the next slide, I have a problem trying to understand why 1,800 square foot has a 468% increase, where the population that lives in homes over 2,600 square feet has a 265% increase. And so, and then the same thing for restaurants. Restaurants is a, is a 950% increase compared to office and other services at 245, and I understand industrial being lower at 184%, but I'm just trying to understand, how do I really think about treating consumers or businesses fairly? How do we get from the rates to how we were going to break this out per dwelling unit or per non-residential square foot?
Could you go back to your first figure you mentioned about residential, you said a percent increase?
Yeah, so I did, I did the change divided by the current fee.
Great, gotcha.
Okay, to come up with percentages. So if I go down the columns, starting from the top, it's 468%, 308.6%, 265% in residential, and then non-residential is 184%, 245%, and 950%. And again, I'm, I'm just worried about our, especially our restaurants here and retail, they've been taking it on the chin, raising their inbound costs for food and all those other things have been going up, and they haven't been raising their prices as much, trying to keep consumers coming in the door, and now we're looking at a 950% increase to them over other services. So I'm just trying to understand the logic of doing the macro math and then deciding to come from macro math all the way down to your house, you get this, your house, you get that, your business, you get this, and your business, you get that. I just am not reconciling with the presentation. I was with you right up, almost with functional population, but I was with you until I got to this slide, doing the pre-reading, I just didn't see any explanation.
I don't have an exact answer for you, but I can tell you that, because I'm not quite sure exactly the basis for the assumptions used in the previous study, I know our assumptions are different because things have been updated and whatnot, so the, the changes in the non-residential between the industrial office and retail might be a portion of the data that we use in the Institute of Transportation Engineers could have changed since 2019, that's one component of it. So I think there's a few components that have added up, there's not one item that has caused the switch, besides, we have the, the $700 and the buildings, the building is $700 per square foot and the prices of that, but we need to go more to the micro level here and look at, well, now that we have these costs allocated between non-residential land uses and residential land uses, what's causing the changes within the various land uses within non-residential? And I have to go back and look at, what are some of those assumptions that were used in the previous study versus what we're using today to determine, I don't want to shoot from the hip here and give you the wrong answer, so I just have to go back and look to find out what's causing the discrepancy in the percentages between the two.
And better understanding that helps us as we get to the public meeting, because if I have to look someone in the face who's got a 1,600 square foot house versus a 2,600 square foot house, and I know there's all sorts of opinions of the economics of the person that lives in a 16 square foot house versus the economics of a person who's in a greater than 3,000 square foot house, you know, I just want to make sure that I can explain that we're treating people fairly and equitably.
I will look into that for you and provide some feedback to Mark to make sure that gets to you. I will tell you that when looking at the different size, impact fees for the different size homes, there are, we have a number of factors, we have people per household based on the home size, which could have changed since the last study, we have the number of trip ends that vary based on the housing size, and it kind of goes on and on, and that's the challenge, is when you look at them in aggregate, there's a change, but which one might be driving that, and that's what I'll need to get back to you on. Sure. Where'd my clicker go? Okay. All right, police, police is a very similar situation as fire, we're doing the same incremental expansion, meaning we're, we're providing an incremental amount of new facilities as new growth occurs, unlike streets where we had that future 10-year forward-looking plan. So very similar assumptions for police when it comes to our IIP and our service demands, again, functional population, the level of service, this is what's different than within fire, is we have 70 vehicles, an average cost of $100,000, and I'm forgetting what the previous study had for that, but it was something lower, I think it was around 70,000. And then we have our, again, the increase in the building square footage cost, about $700, you'll note that that is the same as fire, and we had discussion with staff that when we looked at the types of, the way the infrastructure is put for police and fire, there are a lot of similarities, and on average, that the cost to build a fire facility would be, a building would be similar to that of a police facility, so we kept those both at $700 per, per square foot.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was wondering if that was a typo, because we're talking about police assumptions, and this is based on current inventory of fire stations, and I don't know that I agree-
Oh, I'm sorry, I should say police stations.
Exactly.
I apologize.
That's what my point is, yes, because it says fire stations, and we're discussing police.
Yes, if you could take your red pen-
Okay, thank you.
-mark that out and put down, please, thank you for calling that out, we didn't capture that last time. So it is still $700 for police stations, but, yes.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, when we were working on the budget, we had this discussion as a council, trying to understand why cost for police stations was so much higher than cost of fire stations. And so I don't know that this number makes sense to me at 700, I assumed it was a typo, and you just carried over, police over, but we specifically had a discussion about the extra security and other things needed in police stations, and that's why the, our employees were telling us the costs were higher for police stations.
Our conversation may have occurred before that period of time, I'm not, I wasn't aware of that discussion.
Well, we may have had a discussion regarding the public safety tax, where the new facility for the police department is not a standard station, it's an evidence collection and maintenance facility that has to have a controlled environmental humidity, temperature, et cetera. Yeah, so those are different than a police substation might have.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and thank you for capturing the fire stations, I should say police stations.
Mayor Protam had a question?
Yeah, if I'm looking back again at these charts, as I pointed out before, for the streets fees, it was almost an 80% increase, then I had the fire fees were about 83% increase. The police fees apparently work out to between 42 and 43%. Do you know the history of that? I mean, maybe, I don't know, Mark might know that. Was this increased as the time went on, at least a little bit in the past, in order for it only to be a 43% increase this time?
I couldn't answer that, Mark, I don't know whether you have any insight on that.
Did, did we in the past increase this even slightly, just to-
Well, the current fees are based on the study that was done five years ago, the ones that are in place. They haven't been adjusted since then, the code or the state law does not provide for us to do a CPI adjustment annually to these type of things that need to be studied. And again, a lot of it has to do with the cost per square foot and per vehicle that were used five years ago compared to what is used today.
So, but is this an indication that we're not as far behind the curve for the police department as we are in the fire department at an 83%? Is that an indication of that?
No, again, the impact fees are only used to expand for the existing level of service. The stuff that is brought forward as part of the tax proposition out there is to increase level of service, to get shorter response times, to get more police out on the street. Again, they're related, but they're not very, they're related in that they're both, you know, the same thing, but they're very different service levels that we're pricing, so you can't really draw a correlation between the two.
Well, no, I think, and I'm not, I wasn't even bringing that up, what I was talking about is our City of Prescott past ability to adjust as per, and Raft, tell us, if I've done some research myself in the past, you actually provided a report for us in 2019, 2017?
It's possible, yes. We did the last study.
And if I look, and I did look back at that, it's been a little while, but at some point, and I'm not sure why, we pretty much ignored your suggestion to raise the impact fees. So if we're just talking about impact fees only with police and fire, again, the police-fire fees are being proposed right now at an 83% increase. How do we get, if we didn't raise these police fees, how do we only get to a 43% increase? Are you following me on that?
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not understanding why you think there should be a correlation between those two. Again, they're related to the studies, there's a differential in the way we're calculating the residential versus the commercial, there's a lot of different components to that, so I'm not sure the correlation you're trying to make- trying to make should really exist.
I was going off that very first chart that you had in your presentation, where you had the S, the E, and the A.
Right.
And it, what I saw there is there was no adjustment for-
There has not been an adjustment for any of our fees within the last five years.
Okay.
We studied them five years ago, we're studying them now as required by law. There has not been a study in that interim period, and again, partially because studies take over a year to do.
Thank you.
And again, in our one methodology we changed, we had in police is similar to that, what we did in fire. We're using functional population rather than calls for service, and again, a more stable over time. And we should get more predictable results during the next study. Let's take a look at the components here, very similar to fire in terms of buildings and square footage and level of service, not any changes there. Getting to the infrastructure improvement plans, based on the impact fees we calculated, considering the level of service, which is driven, level of service between non-residential and residential, which is driven by the functional population, the, using that ratio of vehicles per population and vehicles per square footage of commercial space, and projecting the number of receivers we're going to have over 10 years. And based on the impact fee we calculated based on the level of service and the average unit cost of vehicles, average unit cost of buildings, we'll be able to build 39,643 square feet of additional building space to serve growth and have an additional 10 vehicles over the study period. There's a, so that total cost over the 10-year period, which is what our impact fee should recover over the next 10 years, is $5.15 million. And let's take a look at the fees here. Existing and proposed police fees, obviously, we just had a discussion about the changes in these fees versus fire and streets, and the reason for the differences in increase between police and fire, something certainly we can look at. I'm not sure there's a correlation, but obviously, something that we can look at and see if there's a component of one of the assumptions that we use that impacted fire more so than police, and that's, may very well be the issue. And we would just have to go back and look at that. I don't want to shoot from the hip and give you a number when I don't have the answer for you.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. This one was definitely, the percent change was more equitable between, especially the non-residential cost per square foot. It ranged from a low of 150% for industrial up to 178.6% for office and other, and retail and restaurants was right in between those two numbers, so a lot closer of a range. Again, if I go back up to residential, once again, don't build a small house. These impact fees, because once again, we went after 1,800 square foot or less is 220%, where the other two numbers were 132 and 137. So again, I just, I'm not understanding the rationale, but at least this category, it was a lot closer across the board.
Understood, understood. And I'll conclude with, we have a couple of things we need to follow up with, with council, on the functional population. Obviously, that slide doesn't do it justice, because there's a lot more beneath the surface there, and I obviously want to provide some of that information to you to give you a better level of comfort with the level of service and functional population. And with that, I'll- Thank you very much, and I believe up next is Andrew.
Thank you, Todd, I appreciate it. You had a question, Councilman Gambogi?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
There's a lot to learn, a lot to digest. Not only does it give us an idea of where we start with our impact fees, but if you go back to page 22 or 18, depending how you number it, you don't have to go back.
Oh, okay.
But in that, we learned that 16,000 people live somewhere else and work here, and 10,000 live here and work somewhere else. So if there was a really creative real estate agent in the audience, they might figure out that we could get 10,000 people to change homes and pay 10,000 cars off of 89 and 69, and we'd be a happier place.
And again, on the functional population, there's a lot more data that goes into this, this, what I provided is a sample of the, all the components that go into that, so I'll apologize for that confusion, but I'll get some clarification for you on that.
So switching gears to the utility impact fee analysis, going through kind of a similar set of slides, really, you know, focus more on the fees and the outcomes, building on the previous presentation, also on May 14th. Starts out with a little bit of some overview, and I'll, to the extent that we've got some duplication and information, I'll go through that a little bit more quickly. So same legislative process, same kind of steps between the non-utility and the utility fee analysis. I will highlight a couple differences in terms of the service units. We're looking at, you know, utility accounts, volumes of water demanded, wastewater discharged, and the equivalent development units, EDUs, as kind of a, well, not kind of, it's a standardized unit of measurement, takes into account, accounts by meter size and the capacity of the different meter sizes. But a lot of the, you know, similar elements, and certainly the same statute and very similar statutory limitations. You know, kind of revisit and get to the schedule on the end. This has the major milestones, and just to add, you know, later in the voting meeting, one of the items is council considering and providing the notice of intent to set the hearing on August 13th. There's also a requirement to post up the fee reports 30 days before that hearing, so that also happened this week, just in terms of those kind of moving pieces to the 270-day process for the kind of steps to be run. So now I'm going to kind of dive into the kind of, the fees themselves, just again, for those that may be joining this conversation and seeing this today, and a little bit of a review. The utility fees, there's three of them. We've got a water system fee that focuses on the treated water facilities and recovering those costs from new development. There are two different service areas for that fee today. There's a water resource fee that's narrowly set around historical debt issue and debt service for the growth-related portion of a previous acquisition the city completed, one service area there. And the wastewater system is a single fee recovering the cost of those backbone facilities, again, from new development, and one service area for wastewater. Utility approaches are very similar to non-utility, some of the terminology and just the math can be a little different, just, there's a historical or backward-looking approach, the incremental or forward-looking approach, looking at growth-related facilities in the future, and basing the fee on the unit cost of those facilities, and the blend or the hybrid that essentially combines the two. And for the water and wastewater systems, this final methodology is the approach that we're using, that kind of, you know, it blends not just future improvements, but existing facilities and capacity of those facilities to serve new development. So diving a little bit further into the water system fee, here is listed the 15 different projects that are growth-related over this 11-year period that we're evaluating, and then all the other capital projects that, multiple projects that have no kind of growth percentage, also sort of summarized in the last line item. So within those 15 projects, about 29 million, a little less than 29 million is the growth-related portion, and the balance are roughly 23 million is the portion of those projects that's not growth-related. So just kind of going through and, you know, each of those line items, kind of those two components, and then as is in that second to last line, just sort of all the other projects that are not growth-related aren't being listed. So this 28.6 million in terms of the look ahead or look forward gets incorporated in the impact fee analysis or calculation that I'll go through in a minute. And this is the same set of projects, this is just showing over the 11-year period, the timing, and again, you know, those that are in blue are the growth-related portion by year, could be across multiple projects, and the anticipated expenditures in each of those years in total, and across the kind of two sets of funding sources, as summarized in the total as well. So get into the calculation itself. What we're seeing here are, you know, two components. Let me talk for a minute about what we're doing. We've got the two different service areas broken out, service area A and service area B, with, you know, elements and the dollar amounts for the different categories side by side. And so as we looked ahead, the growth-related capital projects I just spoke about are all within service area B, and, you know, total that rough $28.5 million. And then, starting in lines two, continuing through line five, these are the replacement costs of the existing facilities, the facilities that have been constructed, again, for those backbone-type facilities, water supply, treatment, production, transmission, distribution, and then treated water storage. And the component, some of these two give us basically the cost of the facilities themselves that, again, you know, we're looking to recover through the fees that we're setting or calculating. There are two adjustments, and one of them in line six is a reduction, and this is around debt that the city has issued, and the portion of that debt that was not growth-related, said differently, is being repaid by rate, rates. And so we built those facilities, those facilities are in the dollar amount that we have, but this is a credit or an adjustment, basically acknowledging that there's another funding source that's going to pay that, so we kind of reduce that from the facility value. And then lines-
Councilman Moore had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to raise the same issue I raised when we were talking about the residential. I really feel like we haven't maybe taken into account the possibility of future annexations. As a council, we've been talking a lot about AED over the last few years, about Section 32, Section 33, and there's possible projects that will be coming up that will have a significant impact on water, and it's in there? Okay, I just want to make sure it's in there, because there's just some unknowns. When you're talking 10 years out, there's some unknowns.
It's in there, because if it's not in there, then it can't be paid for.
The final adjustment, it also related to debt, but in this case, it's growth-related debt, and these are the portions of existing and projected debt, again, issued within this period, and the net present value of those future interest payments brought back to, again, sort of today's dollars or today's costs. So the aggregate of those, and again, service area A and B looked at separately, we see on line eight. And, you know, after kind of the, a lot of the work that goes into developing, pulling, allocating these numbers, it comes down to the net water system costs. And then we go through a couple of steps to develop the fee, and the fee for the base meter size, or the EDU or equivalent development unit that I referenced earlier in the presentation. So we've got our costs, and then in terms of the capacity, both today and in the future, we've got the ability of system, we're anticipating to be able to treat 14.5 million gallons per day. And so from there, taking the dollar amounts, dividing that by the capacity that exists both in service area A and B, we arrive at the dollars per that unit cost of capacity, in this case, dollars per gallon per day, again, of that, you know, capacity of the system. The other element is, as we look at how existing customers and customers per, again, EDU are using water, and this is on a peak day, as water system, we construct these to meet the demands during the peak period, and ultimately, as peak day, the system-wide water use per EDU is about 371 gallons per day. And so marrying those two, we've got a unit cost and an impact, and an impact on the system that generates the fee. So I'm going to jump ahead to the comparison slide, where, you know, the calculated fee is similar to, well, exactly the same as what was shown. For service area, it's about $970 per EDU or the base meter size, and service area B is coming back at about $5,600. Most new development is assessed the combination of A and B, or the total just under $6,600 for the proposed or calculated fees. As you can see in the next bar, in the next set of information, the existing fees are summarized, and for this component, for this element, the change of, you know, somebody in service area A or B are paying the combined fee, that increase would be $1,300 for this fee. So I'm going to jump-
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been comparing the rates that we were shared on the 514 session with council, with these rates, and the proposed rates did go up versus what we were presented on 514 in, and so the change, so the draft went up, therefore, the change also went up. What drove the change versus the last presentation?
I mean, there were a handful of kind of moving pieces. It was drafted preliminary at that time, and we found, you know, we were, you know, there was, how we're pulling in some projects was incorrect, and a couple other issues with how we're addressing existing assets. So again, I mean, it's sort of one of these processes. We were, hadn't quite finalized it fully and found a few things before we, you know, finalized the analysis.
So is this it? Is this the finalized, or will we have another change next time we get together for the public meeting?
This should be the final, barring, you know, something-
You're still all looking at it again and again and again.
This is, these are the proposed fees, you know, we're posting these up. I don't anticipate that they will change.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Could you clarify for me and the public, the service areas A and B, is that traditional Prescott versus the northern part, which is going to have more growth? I'm, I just need a little clarification. I didn't see a map, but I assume it's in the other packet that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you, Councilperson Rusing. Area A is everything north of the airport, and area B is everything south of and including the airport, because we do serve water outside of the city limits, north of the airport, and those folks do not receive benefit from infrastructure that's more in line with what's in the city limits, per se. So there are two different service areas, so they pay for what they receive.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
I'm going to switch gears to the water resource calculation. This one, as I mentioned earlier, is a little more narrow, and it's a portion of the statute that, you know, essentially- that, you know, essentially allows communities to maintain fees that are used to repay debt service. So this sort of debt obligation occurred before the statutory changes that Mark referenced that went into place in 2011, 2012. So there's a pretty narrow fee calculation just around that debt service itself that goes back to the acquisition that was done in 2004 and a couple of adjustments around the debt that I'll show on the next slide. Because of that, it's decreasing, you know? Five years ago, we had more debt to be repaid. Five years later, that, some of that's been retired and paid off. And so the fee is going down for that reason. And this just shows the elements, as I alluded to earlier, the same types of adjustments in terms of principal that was being retired through rate funded sources versus the growth related interest net present value. And then that is assessed over the capacity of that facility with the same impact of a user on the peak day water use and kind of the, you know, the math leading to the fee of just under $1,200, again, for the base meter size. Switching to wastewater, there's a couple, there's more projects, both the growth related or IIP eligible improvements over this 11 year period. In aggregate, it's 23 different projects with the growth related portion of just over $76 million. And in kind of a similar comparison, the non-growth related portion of those same improvements, it's about $105 million. And then similar with water, there's a set of improvements that don't benefit growth that total about $27 million. So in this case, a little more extensive set of improvements, more sort of cost overall and a greater amount of costs that are growth related over this 11 year period. Similar kind of chart just showing the timing of roughly $208 million expenditures over, again, over this 11 year period with the two different sort of colored or different types of funding sources, if you will. And we're using the same approach with wastewater for the single service area. So as we're picking up the growth related capital, that 76 million, 76 and a half million in line one, and then the components of the backbone facility in lines two, three and four, the replacement costs of those assets, those facilities that have been constructed or in the ground. And then the similar adjustments in terms of the reduction for future non-growth related debt that's going to be repaid from those funding streams, the addition of the growth related net present value of interest and the kind of net wastewater system cost of the total is just under 264 million. When it comes to the capacity, this is includes some changes that are anticipated that are part of the plan over the 10 year period, sorry, 11 year period with the centralization of the wastewater facility. So at the end of this period, we'll have expanded the airport facility and that, essentially, that'll be providing wastewater services throughout the community with seven and a half MGD is a million gallons a day is what is anticipated. And then, you know, costs that results from that math between the costs and the capacity we see in line nine. Wastewater, certainly different demand on the system, but we evaluated a similar type of event in terms of kind of that peak discharge or use per EDU, certainly much lower for wastewater than water, but at 172 gallons per day. The impact per EDU or best estimate for that impact on the system. And then the resulting math, if you will, with a calculated fee of just over $6,000, again, for that base meter size. So as we compare this to the current fee, 100% increase over the current fee based on what's calculated. And then tracking this across the three different utility fees, we're seeing the, again, this is the base meter size, current fee totals just under 9,800. And the proposed or calculated fees are just under 14,000, again, for the base meter size. So across all fee areas, that would be an increase of just over $4,000 per connection. And bringing the non-utility and the utility fees together and showing a comparison to Prescott Valley and Chino Valley in terms of similar fee categories they may have. And I should illustrate and it's footnoted, but this is for defined house size, you know, number of units. And so this falls into that kind of middle range of the 1,800 square feet to the 2,600 square feet in terms of the non-residential fee areas and a couple of other assumptions regarding some of the other community fees. So as we stack everything together, we've got today for this type of single family residential profile, paying a fee or being assessed a fee of $11,400. And under the proposed or draft fees, that would be up to $19,300, an increase of just under $8,000 per connection or permit. And as, you know, we're picking up and comparisons, again, for this profile, for this type of size residential development, the current city fees are pretty close to those kind of aggregate or total in Prescott Valley and Chino Valley.
Councilman Gambogi had a question.
I've been waiting an hour and a half for this slide. So I got a few questions. Earlier in, I think it was Rob's presentation, he said you can't spend on libraries. How does Prescott Valley spend that or collect that much on a library?
I believe, and it was certainly unverified, but I believe that this is, there's some allowances for if a facility has debt issued and the fee was tied to that historical debt issue that you can maintain that fee until that debt is retired, similar to the city's water resource fee.
And we're looking at about a 72% lift in impact fees when you add them all up.
It come up to just under 70%.
Thank you.
And again, this is for this fee profile, so.
And I would expect that Prescott Valley is probably on a different five year analysis cycle than we are.
I believe so. I don't, trying to recall, I think it was after 19, or that, yes, I think you're exactly right. It's staggered a little differently.
So they may be coming up on a new five year cycle themselves and having to factor in some of these high inflationary costs for system maintenance and growth, et cetera. So comparing our current or proposed fees with where Prescott Valley is now is not necessarily accurate because they may be looking at a five year cycle upgrade and that may bring them much closer to where our proposed rates are going to be. Am I correct in that?
It's possible. And these types of comparisons, while informative and interesting, as council member had mentioned, you know, something that is, you know, a decision or kind of a point of interest for how do we compare and how we stack up. I will say it's just fraught with danger. I mean, it's, you know, there are different facilities, different history, different service level, you know, and, you know, even getting into how things were funded historically. So, I mean, your point on timing is valid and, you know, to the extent, you know, I don't, I don't believe the city of Prescott is an island with cost increase. Actually, I know that's not the case. So I certainly suspect that, you know, some of those drivers would be embedded or included, you know, as they look to update their fees. But like anything, you know, different communities make different decisions and.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's also important to point out that Prescott Valley does not have a fire department. They use CAFMA. And so they're not collecting those fees and we are. So that's also another reason for the difference in price.
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
So I own property in Prescott Valley and I pay roughly 14 something a year for CAFMA for the fire, the district. And then I also.
Dollars, cents, 14.
I'm sorry, $1,400. And then I did look up, I had a set of blueprints. I looked it up for a 2,700 square foot house. It would have been $2,200 in their impact fees. Then also, having built in Maricopa County for almost 40 years, the impact fees were just assumed. Everybody knew that you were going to pay them and we paid far more than that, you know, for a 3,000 square foot house. So I was going to ask somebody that, how many other municipalities do we even know in the state that don't charge impact fees? I think everybody charges impact fees. Does anybody know the answer to that? I'm pretty sure they do, but thank you.
I don't know the answer to that. Any other questions on this slide? And this kind of just sort of takes us to the final slide in terms of the, you know, next steps that we touched on earlier. And more of the meeting side that there's, as I referenced, you know, posting the fee reports this week in advance of that public hearing, assuming that gets set later today. And certainly, you know, hoping for additional questions if there are any. But this is the last slide of this presentation.
Well, thank you very much for a highly detailed and a very interesting presentation. Obviously, the cost for maintaining and expanding capacity in this environment, whether it's for commodities cost or labor costs and all those things have accelerated pretty dramatically over the last couple of years. And quite frankly, looking at the Federal Reserve's meetings, they don't seem to be anticipating any of those inflationary pressures coming down in the next near future. So with that said, do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have two cards. The first is from Sandy Griffiths.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, before Sandy gets up here, Councilmember Rusing had a comment.
Yeah, I would just like to summarize that these fees are 100% reinvested into the community for our infrastructure and public safety. The reason why we have these fees is to keep up with growth so that when you call 911, someone will show up. And when you turn on your water faucet, something will come out. That's the kind of philosophy that I have. So if people are upset about them, I'm sorry, but we're doing this because we want to make sure that we don't have a failing city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? How's that? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mayor Protem, council, I'm Sandy Griffiths, Executive Director of the Contractors Association. And I'm not here before you to dispute or say no to impact fees. We know that our existing deficiencies cannot be embraced or covered with our current impact fees. It's a given. We know that. We understand the bind that we're in. I'm asking that, and much thanks to Raftillis, Mr. Cristiano and his colleague for their report. I did go through it and I have a few questions that I hope can be answered prior to some sort of vote. And we did this from a 50,000 square foot level. And I was with Councilwoman Furworth, the functional population. That was one of the questions I had and couldn't wrap my arm around it. And I did some research and discovered that Raftillis used demand hours per day. And I think maybe there should be some additional research where they should look at calls for service, which seems to be a more common way to compute expenses. So that was one concern I had. The other item that I know is happening, you hear it and you said it multiple times today, rates and prices and construction material, they're skyrocketing daily, daily. So I'm concerned with the allocation of costs for both the water, the IIP and the ULP, where those percentages and the cost came from. I don't know if public works, how we were able to get those program expenses centralized and how they were put together because I see every day that engineering estimates are either too low or they're too high. So I'm concerned and I don't know where those fall in with these percentage and factors for growth. Just something I would like to have a more detailed look at to make sure that we are spot on with those percentage of growth dollars. Because what I want more than anything is for all of us to be wrapped arm in arm for these fees. It's important that we are proud of what we've done. We're proud of the fee increase and we need to stand tall and make sure that everybody understands it. So again, I'm not here today to say no to impact fees and I bet you thought I was. I do the police and fire for this $700 a square foot. I had the same question that Councilwoman Furworth had as well. So I'd like more detail on that. And then the street, they use, they used a citywide service area. And I wonder if maybe we shouldn't divide that into a water service area like we did A and B, just asking, so we can be more enterprise together with where we are with these rates. But Raftillis, they did a great job. I appreciate their hard work and effort, but I do feel that there are some confusion factors that need to be outlined and confirmed before we move forward, Furworth with these fees, forward with these fees. And again, I'm not here to dispute them. They are high. They took my breath away when I first saw them, but I understand what we have to do and that we're behind the eight ball. We need to answer our industry and new homeowners. And on top of this, I don't know what it's going to do to attainable, affordable workforce housing. So we need to be cautious there. So thank you for letting me have a few minutes.
Tabitha Alcides.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I want to start with the timeline that Mark introduced at the very beginning because one of the important pieces about that timeline that it doesn't show is that our impact fee history, in the history of the city of Prescott, impact fees have rarely been adopted at the rates that were recommended to the city council by consultants. So I'm one of those non-functioning retirees who spends too much time on the city's laser fish. But I've gone back to 2006 and consistently, with the exception of 2008, the city councils prior to this council have not adopted the fees as recommended. And in 2008, the fees that were adopted and they were just, the water. And in 2008, the fees that were adopted, and they were just, the water and wastewater fees, were scuttled by the state imposed moratorium that Mr. Woodville referenced. So we've been behind for a long time. The other interesting thing, when you read through all the old minutes, and yeah, I really do need to get a life, you start to come upon some of the arguments about why the fees shouldn't be increased. One of them is the assumptions need to be looked at more closely. And so the assumptions start to get picked apart. The other one is affordable housing. And I would make the argument that despite years of reduced impact fees, we're still talking about affordable housing. This is not the mechanism, the policy mechanism to get affordable housing. The other argument is that, that was made a lot previously, I have not heard that yet today, is that builders will go elsewhere if it's too expensive to build in Prescott. And again, we don't have any evidence. What drives building is market demand and what drives pricing is what the market will bear. And some locations are more profitable than others. And Prescott's gorgeous. So at some point, people are going to build here or not build here, but the decision's not going to be because of impact fees. What's happening right now is you are the recipients of all those years of impact fees not being charged at what they needed to be charged at. If I look at what was proposed originally in 2019 by Raftellus and what is being proposed today, and I'm looking at the numbers from May, I'm not looking at the updated numbers, there's about a 40% increase, not an almost 70% increase. So over four consultants, we've spent over a million dollars, and I think it went back to 2006. Every single council has not adopted the recommended fee. So you are left with the unenviable task to avoid the temptation to not adopt something lower than what's being recommended. I wanted to address one thing, two other things. I hope you will come back with some of the questions that have been raised here about why there's differences in the meters. I think that's important for the public to know in the next public hearing. And Mayor, good, I just happened to have a discussion yesterday with some Prescott Valley staff and they are just starting their study. So I think we're going to see Prescott Valley's rates change significantly. Thank you for listening and thank you for a task that's not pleasant. Thank you for doing this.
That's all, Mayor.
Very good. That concludes our study session agenda. But I tell you that just because previous councils decided to reduce the necessary fees because of public pressure or whatever other justification, I'm of the mind that we don't point the finger back at who didn't do what when, but do what's right now and to make sure that our infrastructure in this city is capable, reliable, and is prepared to deal with the future. So I think that's where every previous council should have made their decisions. They didn't, but that doesn't mean that we're going to kick the can down the road. We're going to make sure that our city continues to be the great place to live now and in the future. And these impact fees are a component of that. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.